Mike McCall, Screamer Community High School District Seventy Seven, Board of Education meeting. Please rise for the board of leaders. Oh, I'm sorry, you do the roll first, alright.
I'm in a hurry today.
Mr. Parrish?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Henning?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Gao?
Here.
Ms. Dickie?
Here.
That's a quorum. Now I'm gonna rise for the board of leaders. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Do we have any agenda changes this evening?
Yes, I need to remove two items, old business, item C and D, we will get back to those next month.
Okay, do we have any public comments this evening, seeing none? We've all had a chance to look at the consent agenda, do we have any additions, corrections, anything? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Henning, motion?
Second.
Start with you, Mike?
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
Uh, we do, we have a buildings and grounds report. Five o'clock tonight, building and grounds, met, we took a tour of the, uh, the building, towers building that we are discussing purchasing, um, and then we went to the Ag Center renovation, took a look at the progress of that, and then actually looked at some classrooms in the, uh, building that are being, um, cleaned up and changed, and some flooring being done, and some different things, and so, um, just kind of a overview of a lot of different things from the building, and updates on where we're at on those things.
Any questions or comments? Alright, so let's move on to the, does our new student member have a report this evening, sorry?
I don't really.
We have another prepared tonight?
Sorry.
Not a problem. Principals report.
Okay, here we go, I'm filling in for Mrs. Young tonight, um, we've got, uh, senior fee summary, um, as of six seventeen nineteen, the senior fee balances, we have a student A who owes forty dollars, um, this student will graduate in December two thousand and nineteen, um, student B owes one hundred and forty-five dollars, and this student will be a fifth year senior and will not graduate until two thousand and twenty, and then we have student C who owes four hundred and thirty dollars, um, this parent is supposed to be making payments, um, it's due to forest custody and those kinds of things, um, made payment was the last payment, so a fee was sent out to this parent. Returning student fees, um, we have several that are out there as far as like lunch, library, and locks, however, those are still coming in this summer, um, students need to understand that if these aren't paid, um, they're not allowed to participate in extra physical activities and the homecoming dance, so those have to be paid before they can do that. Um, summer math and reading enrichment, um, these two week courses were completed last Friday on June the fourteenth, um, we had thirteen incoming freshmen attend, and we want to thank Ben House for leading the math, and Heather Nancy for leading the reading, and we have summer school, um, summer school math and driver's ed, so our math, we had nine students attending for credit recovery, um, which was led by, um, Carrie Larr, and driver's education, we had twenty-eight students driving this summer, and that was led by, um, Matt Larr, Brooke Lace, and J.R. Brettlinger, and we'd like to thank those teachers for running the programs this summer. Um, summer activities are in full swing, uh, grade school and high school athletic camps have taken place, um, high school contact days for athletics and weight training, um, a lot of kids in and out of the building, um, so far this summer, summer games and, um, they're playing with, or, summer games are playing with other schools, and then summer band camp, they have their camp set for July the twenty-second, and that's gonna go through the twenty-sixth, and that's from eight to four, and then they have the Smithon Parade on July the twenty-seventh, and then they have camp on July the twenty, or twenty-ninth through August the second, um, seven o'clock to three P.M. And then two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year, um, registration, um, this has been sent to the Tribune and has also been sent out on Tuesdays.
Any questions or comments?
Just on the, uh, the seniors, that A, B, and C, so do we understand that we only have three out of the, and that was out of the graduating, uh, senior class?
That's the way I'm understanding it, yes.
And so there were only three students, so, sounds like changes that we made to the fee structure, collection, and everything else, uh, from charging to everything.
Being able to pay online, yes, that was a big factor.
I think that, that's a vast improvement over the previous years, isn't it?
Yes. Yeah, we were ten to twelve thousand dollars previously.
And we're under five hundred or five-ten or something?
Okay, move on to the superintendent's report.
Alright, have a few things, uh, legislative update, uh, pretty busy up in Springfield over this past, uh, spring, a couple bills that will affect us, the, uh, state reinstated the five o'clock hour day, um, they'd actually taken it out, and, um, but they, uh, when they put it back in, they kept in a couple, uh, very good provisions, one is we are allowed to take the day after parent-teacher conferences, which we've done in the past, so we work two evenings, we can take that party off for the two evenings at work, it also allows us to start using e-learning days, and, um, so, so basically, we set up a, um, a curriculum that if we would have snow day, since the kids have Chromebooks, we could then require students to do work at home, there's a lot of details we have to work through, it has to be approved by the R.O.E., I believe I got an email the other day, it has to be approved by September first, so that's something that Jill Laurie and I are gonna sit down and work on, um, if we do that, there's a possibility we would not have to take snow days, so, uh, R.O.E. would not have to make up snow days, we could use an e-learning, but, uh, there's a lot of work that has to be done with that before we can do that. State passed the budget, which is always great news, uh, they did add about three hundred and seventy-five million dollars in the evidence-based funding, um, which is about twenty-five more than they did last year, um, I think we received thirty-eight thousand dollars extra, so hopefully we'll get an additional thirty-eight thousand, uh, we'll have to wait till that all gets worked out, um, couple other bills, uh, that could affect us, there is, uh, sent bill six ninety, which is a vertical construction project bill, adds one point five billion dollars to school districts for vertical construction, of course, the school district has to match that, um, so that'll be interesting, uh, we won't know details for probably, I would imagine, not till, uh, next year we'll get details, but that could, uh, help us out moving forward. Lots of summer work going on now, um, run through real quick, we have some new carpet put in the central hallway and in the south hallway, the, uh, asbestos abatement is completed in N sixteen and in the band room, as you can see, the, uh, Mr. Nipper went through and, and redid, uh, the way the library books are set up, it creates a couple study nooks, uh, that kids can come in and, and work on, um, the track respray has been completed, the striping has not, that, that'll be done when they can schedule the striper, but it'll be done in plenty of time for the next event, um, the south end is essentially done, uh, cafeteria, up to the cafeteria, now they're working on the central, and we'll work up the ramp to the north end. Things that'll get done next week is the gym floor refinishing, uh, they'll start putting the tile back in, N sixteen in the band room, um, and then, we're gonna, actually, I mentioned it, and I have it taped out here, it's not gonna show up on the camera, but we're going to, uh, put a, uh, an additional room in here, uh, that we can move the tech, um, equipment into, and that will free up a room for academic lab, uh, which allows Bass to use another room in the north end, so those are things that we are working on. Curriculum audit, tomorrow Jill and I are going to be going to, uh, meet Dr. Wood, along with, uh, District Seventy and, and Smithon, uh, representatives to start talking about the curriculum audit that's gonna happen this fall. We sold a bus, um, one of our large buses, we were asking ten thousand, we got nine thousand, I thought it was a pretty good deal, that has been delivered, we received the check for it, um, and then I had a little note to myself on the Triple I conference, uh, Kendra's gone through and reserved the rooms for those board members that said they wanted to attend, uh, Ms. Young is informing she doesn't want to attend, uh, there's some other conferences she'd rather go to, so, if you did not put your name in and you would like to attend, we have a room available, those are very hard to get, um, if there isn't another board member, uh, that wants to go, uh, then I'd be interested in, in probably taking Mr. Alt, um, with us, he was, uh, very good for him to go last year, um, so, kind of, if, if, if there is any board members that are interested, um, let me know, otherwise I'll talk to him, uh, unless any other board members have any questions or comments or concerns.
Any questions? Okay. We'll move on to old business.
Alright, uh, been contacted by Mr. Boyd Ferguson of the I.S.B. about our, uh, policy update, um, he has sent us a draft copy of our new policy, I forwarded that to you guys, so that should have been, uh, the document shared with you, um, he is looking at having our, uh, first meeting, um, and this would be, um, I believe there's two board members that are on that committee, two board members, myself and Mr. Boyd, and the first, three meetings, the first one we would look at, uh, sections one, two, and eight, and we're looking at the end of July as the first meeting, so, what I could do is I can, um, send you guys a quick, uh, text, or have Kendra get ahold of you and see what dates, um, I sent him a message, I'm waiting for replies, so once I get that, we'll kind of put that in motion, uh, this'll, this'll take probably most of the rest of the year and probably in the next year to get the whole thing completed.
I have no problem getting calls for work at work, I have a desk phone, so if you need information about that right away or something during the day while you're here, definitely call me.
Okay. Alright. And Dennis, you're the other person, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, basically what we'll do is we will start in section one and go through and talk about all the different changes, um, that's what he and I did, um, and then we'll get that finalized, they do all the work, they'll send us a finished copy when we're all done, then the board will approve they, uh, updated board policy manual.
Any questions or comments on that? Move on to item B.
I wanted to give you a quick update on Ag Center renovation, um, it's, it's starting to move along a little better as of late, um, so the electrician has all of the, uh, conduit things in, they needed to pull wire, the transformer, I've got news, that's gonna be in a lot sooner than we thought, uh, the roof, uh, what's it called, membrane has been put on, uh, we just need trim around it, and they're starting to work on the EFS, um, the outer coating that goes on the building, um, so, I've been told that it's, it's on time and, and we'll be finished by, uh, start school.
Is that, uh, that membrane that was hanging over the side, has that gone all the way across that, the building, is it just more like one sheet?
No, no, it's got seams, it's got a world of seams.
Whether the sheet is black in color up on top, does it get painted or turned, turned a different color, it's always black?
And they, it, uh, it has, uh, like, two-inch rigid foam insulation.
Underneath.
Underneath.
I saw it, I saw it stacked.
Yeah, and so they put that on first and, and put that on, and then that comes over, and then there's a trim, metal trim, aluminum trim, whatever it is, it goes around that and finishes off, um, the roof, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Move on to item C.
Uh, we, uh, eliminate C and Ds.
So we're starting with old business. Now we're on to new business.
Alright, um, we need to conduct a budget hearing to, for the amended budget, so, there is, uh, we'll need a motion to go out of this and go into a budget hearing.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn regular meeting and go to a budget hearing. Motion, who else?
Second.
Roll call, we'll start with you, Dean.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Alright, so, there was, uh, there really wasn't much change between the April, um, review of the budget and today, um, there's two sheets that are in your, your folder, uh, one is a summary of all the funds, overall, we are about six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in the positive as far as fund balances, uh, so it's kind of backwards, um, if it's a positive, that means we spent more than we said we're going to, and if it's a negative, then we spent less than what we said we're going to, so, um, you can see all the, uh, expected fund balances at the bottom, uh, the Ed Fund is very, very healthy, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, uh, building grounds, again, very healthy, uh, we've, uh, brought the health, life, safety down a little bit because of the different projects, but overall, we're in really good shape, and, and Diane continues to, um, make adjustments in the line items in the budgets. You don't have that? It was in the packet?
Yeah.
To the packet, yeah, okay.
I saw it on there, I just...
Any questions or comments on the, the budget? Seeing none, then we need to have a motion to adjourn the budget hearing and reconvene to our regular meeting.
Second.
Second. Motion, second. Carrie, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we're now back in our regular meeting. Item B.
Uh, this is just the, um, item to, um, take the action to approve the amended budget.
Need a motion to approve the second reading, adopt the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen amended budget for, for District Seventy Seven as presented. Moved by Dean, second by Carrie. Vicki, we'll start with you.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. Item C.
Uh, this is the time to look at our contract with OPA and, uh, talk about a renewal of the contract, um, there is a copy of the renewal in the contract with a rundown of the numbers, uh, we're actually in a lot better shape than I was hoping we would be in, um, we were actually, uh, seventeen thousand dollars positive on lunch, uh, the biggest hit came with the à la carte, where we lost about fifty-six hundred, a lot of that had to do with a, um, the, the percentage that we are allowed to charge to the state, um, and that percentage was off because of how quickly we transitioned from Freeburg employees to OPA employees in the, in the kitchen, it typically takes longer, um, as they move through that, they, they make small adjustments, uh, we didn't have that time, so, we were hit right away, so, just the second half of this, uh, item is to approve an amendment that basically puts a percentage in there that makes the à la carte wash, that, that we won't make money, we won't lose money. Uh, we did lose about two thousand dollars in, uh, breakfast, but a, uh, a big part of that, I forget what it was, thirteen hundred, fifteen hundred, we actually bought breakfast for all the kids the day we did the state testing, and so, felt like we really wanted the kids to have a meal, and so, that was an extra expense, um, overall, uh, we have a small loss in the breakfast, which I'll address later in fees, um, but, again, we made about nine thousand, I anticipate next year to be closer to about fourteen or fifteen thousand, uh, but wanted to point out that we, um, had lost anywhere from about thirty to seven annually, so this is a very positive turnaround, um, and I think as we move forward with them, that they're just gonna get better with what we're doing and our partnership with them. So there's actually two motions, one's to approve the contract, the other one is to approve the amendment, um, it's a long, to fix the price food service management contract as presented.
Any questions or comments? I'd like to make the motion to approve the contract renewal with OPA as presented.
Second.
Start with you, Vicki.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes, we need a motion to approve the amendment to fix price food service management contract from, 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 second, I'm sorry, was it Dennis, was it Dennis second? Start with you, Mike?
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item D.
Uh, because, uh, June thirtieth is the end of fiscal year, um, we'll have to pay bills between now and then, so we need authorization from the board for Diane to make any bills, paying bills that are due between now and June thirtieth.
Any questions or comments on this? I'll make the motion to approve the payment of district bills between June twentieth and June thirtieth as needed.
A second.
Second by Angie. Carrie, we'll start with you.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item C, or E, I'm sorry.
This is, uh, annual business we take out a loan, um, and this is to, um, cover items, um, in technology, and, uh, the way this works is that, uh, the lease levy, you can only use lease levy money if you have a loan or a lease, so we have to take a loan out in order to be able to use that money, so this money is all used for technology, it's, they, there's some Chromebooks we're buying, there's, uh, actually, we were able to, um, use some of this for some of the renovations for the Ag, both for the doors and the cameras and all the, uh, and the tech stuff that we're doing in the lab, so that, that's a nice thing, uh, we go through Citizens Bank, um, our, and Diane has called around, Citizens gives us the best, uh, deal on that, and that's what we've gone through the fa, the path, so I'd like you guys to approve that if you would.
Any questions or comments?
Didn't we talk about doing Chromebooks for the, for the, for the, for the whole freshman year and setting that up instead of being in old school, are, have you decided yet?
We haven't, we haven't made a decision, it wasn't gonna be for this year, it wouldn't be starting until next fall.
Okay.
But we, yeah, we haven't, this is, this is to...
Just replacements.
Whatever replacements we need, and, um, I think there's some teacher Chromebooks that we need to buy too. But, yeah, that's just, it's kind of a filler, 'cause we have seven hundred and fifty Chromebooks, maybe eight hundred or so, yeah, so this is just to fill in the gaps.
Any other questions? We need a motion to move to approve the lease levy loan through Citizens Bank for seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-five cents.
Second.
Second, second by Mike. Angel, start with you.
Aye.
Second, aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Item F.
Uh, student fees, it's the time of year to talk about student fees, I do have just a few that I am interested in increasing, uh, the first is the parking fee, uh, from seventy-five dollars to a hundred dollars, uh, then the others, uh, there is a small increase in the breakfast fee, and this is to try to, uh, recoup some of the money they were losing in breakfast, so just a small fifty cent fee, and then the last one, and I need to add, that wasn't in the writing, um, the state says that our adult prices have to be at least fifty cents more than our, uh, student prices, and they're not, going twenty-five, so, we have to increase the adult prices by twenty-five cents, so that it's, it's, it meets the state requirement, what I didn't put in the report to you guys is, I missed, there's actually an adult salad, so we have to increase that as well to make sure it's fifty, at least fifty cents more than the, the child, um, cost.
Any questions or comments?
So the, the breakfast, um, will increase to two fifty, is that?
Correct. From two dollars to two fifty.
And approximately how many breakfasts are, are served?
Um, we probably do about thirty to thirty-five a day, it's not, it's not times, there's not a lot of kids that eat it.
Okay, that's fifteen bucks a day.
And it's not, it's not gonna cover our complete loss, it's just to try to make a little bit of the end of loss.
Sure. But you said thirteen hundred of that loss was because we gave everybody a breakfast, so we're covering that also with the, with the increase, and then, uh, the doubling of the, of the parking fees in two years, I, I, we're just trying to cover our, our maintenance costs on those.
We spent, we spent almost ten thousand, or right at ten thousand to redo that parking lot, the senior lot, and we have to do that every couple of years.
And fees, I, your feeling is that the, the fees should cover that and it shouldn't just come out of the, the buildings and the grounds?
No, it won't cover that. It won't, it won't cover the cost of all that, no, it's just, it's just to try to help, you know, put a gap in.
Seems like a lot, doubling it in two years seems like a lot.
I get a lot of comments from, uh, from parents and everything, that they had to break out their, their checkbook and, uh, and pay these fees, uh, I mean, any kind of increase, even, even a twenty-five dollar, uh, increase is, is a lot, and, um, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't, and I, granted, we've got expenses, we gotta cover them, uh, but, at the same time, we've got buildings and around, uh, levy, and that certainly covers it. You say, you say that still puts us, uh, less than most schools?
Uh, especially if you go west, north and west, you, you, you're talking about two hundred and fifty dollars, some schools charge, not all of them, but, um, you know, and if we're, you know, I still have back in my mind that that area over there is probably a, a prime spot for more parking, so, you know, it's gonna cost money, but again, this, we're not, this fifty dollar increase is not gonna cover, you know, it's not like these guys are paying for that parking lot.
Yes.
You know, to maintain it and, uh, to do what we need to do, it's pretty expensive.
About how many students, how many student slots are paid for?
How many students are paying?
Yeah, how many, thank you, I forgot to say that right.
Probably two fifty, two seventy, maybe?
And how many total slots do we have?
We're three forty, three fifty.
And the disparity is, they're not used, or are we asking students that don't actually pay?
Faculty and staff. No, they have to pay parking, parking doesn't wait, they don't, you know, frame reduced doesn't, they don't have the parking wait.
Any other questions or comments on this?
Would you be, like, be willing to, let's say, increase it ten dollars this year and then finish it off next year, do eighty-five dollars, if that's the increase we're gonna increase into the year, double it?
Frankly, I have no problem raising twenty-five bucks, I think it's cheap.
I guess my, I guess my feeling is, is that with the kids wanting to drive, you know, if they wanna have that parking place, I, I think twenty-five, it's, it's, we're still reasonable, and I know whenever I get that hit for, for a kid, it is, it is a lot of money to come up with, but, that can also be part of that kid's responsibility too, I mean, if I, if, if Ainsley wants to park at the school, I can make that pay, that's, here, here's what it is, um, a hundred dollars is not, I don't think that's an absorbent amount, so that's just my, my feeling.
You don't think it'll force, uh, kids that aren't gonna park at school or aren't parking at school for other reasons than paying that amount of money?
Yeah, I think that's more of the other reasons.
And in years past, we talked about this, in years past, we've hit, not sold everything, but, our, I shouldn't say that, we sell it usually by, um, December, and this year was probably February, March, before we sold all the parking spots, because we added that lot over here and opened up all the student parking, but there are still students that come in and ask for parking.
And when they come in in February, is it still a hundred dollars or is it half price for half the year?
They, yeah, they kinda cut it, yeah.
Are there still a lot of students that park on the street, do they have a rent?
Oh, yeah. But like Dennis says, for other reasons.
Wrong, yeah.
So. Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve the Freeburg Community High School District Seventy Seven student fees for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year? So, moved by Dean, do we have a second? Second by Gary. Mike, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item G.
Uh, we need to appoint a SWIC night class coordinator, we still have our foundry class here, and this person, basically, all they do is take about a phone call or two from SWIC and say, do we still wanna do this, and I say yes, so, uh, we just need to have a name to it, and typically it's been the superintendent, so I think that's appropriate.
Do we have any questions or comments? Your motion?
Second.
Motion by Dean, second by Vicki. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? You oppose? None, motion passes. Item H.
Uh, appoint the district auditor for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, we had talked last month about putting this out to bid, and as I started to go through that process, found out that, uh...
You skipped with H as the...
Oh, you're right, Vicki, I did. So, I'm glad Vicki pointed that out, because, this is tough, we need to appoint the, uh, board member to represent SCHS Foundation for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, so there is a person that sits on, uh, goes to the foundation meetings, works with the foundation, they are ex-efecto, they don't get a vote, but they are, attend the meetings, so if anybody would like to volunteer, I thought this was a different item, this is why it made it so exciting, that you brought it up, but if anybody's interested in being named at that person, that would be great.
See, and I thought Gary would be excellent, if that, I'd already written down.
Well, the good thing is twice what you get paid for these meetings.
I'll volunteer.
Okay, so we'd honor the form, so we'll need a motion, if you...
I already thought I was, so I'm, 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 well, I guess, maybe I'm walking here.
So it's a dumb deal, I...
I did too, you know, that's, I'm, I'm, well, maybe I'm not supposed to.
All right.
We did that last one.
I know, you...
I am, I... All right, okay, I'll start it again. Uh, we talked in April about, uh, putting out the auditors to bid, as I started through that process, I found out that I was about a year late. And so, um, uh, we're not gonna put it out for bid for this year. So we need to, uh, approve an auditor, and I am, uh, suggesting we approve, uh, Shepaboyle. Um, they did have a slight increase of, uh, about five hundred dollars over the last year's cost. Um, that's the first increase they've had in, I know, at least three years. So, um, I would like them to do the audit again this year, and we've actually already scheduled them to come in in July, so...
Okay, any questions or comments? We need a motion? I'll make a motion, Gary's making the motion, do we have a second? Second. Second by Dean. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, motion passes.
Do we need a motion approval for the last one?
No, he volunteered.
Okay. Just checking.
Since this is money, it is a roll call.
Um, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
We'll start with you, Angie.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Okay, do we have any board correspondence this evening?
We do not.
Any agenda items?
Uh, none.
Do we have a reason to go into closed session?
Uh, we do, for, uh, personnel.
All right, believe covers it, okay. Do we have a motion to move into closed sessions? Motion by Dennis, second by Angie. Start with you, Vicki.
Aye.
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 Aye? Motion passes, we're now in closed session. Okay, we're back in closed session. Item A.
Um, move to approve the non-certified salary increases for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Move to hire Chelsea, Chelsea Littfeldt as a business teacher at FCHS for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
So move.
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Move to approve Mr. Jeff Alt to serve as the district's webpage administrator for the nineteen-twenty school year.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Move to accept the resignation letter of Mr. J.R. Bretlinger as a teacher at FCHS effective immediately.
Can we make some move?
Second.
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Move to accept the resignation letter from Rich Kloss as custodian.
So moved.
Second. I'll start.
Aye.
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 Um? Aye.
Motion passes.
Move to hire Mr. Mike Whitstone and Mr. Nick Jones as assistant football coaches for FCHS for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
So move. Second.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes.
Move to hire Keala Moore, Jonah Gurpin, Kenta Lindblad, and Kyle Erlinger as summer help at FCHS for the summer of two thousand nineteen.
So move.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye? Motion passes.
Move to approve Mrs. Mackenzie Becker as the volunteer cheer coach for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Move to retain Mr. Matt Law as head boys basketball coach for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
So move.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes.
Move to retain Mrs. Bethany McQuiston as head girls basketball coach for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
So move. Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Move to retain Mr. Doug Haas as head boys and girls bowling coach for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
So move.
Aye, or second.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Aye? Motion passes.
Move to retain Mr. Drew Gerke as head boys baseball coach for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
So moved.
Second. Aye?